Everyone, please turn yourself, both pages and other mobile communication devices on silent mode. A call to meeting order. We're going to start with taking statements from the public, let's check in with our various sites. Here in Kilauea, we have one testifier. Let's see, Barbara in Mahalo, good morning. Any testifiers?
Hi, good morning Chair, Yosimoro, we have no testifiers, good morning.
Okay, thank you. And Dave in Waimea, good morning.
Good morning Chair, we have one testifier this morning.
Okay, thanks Dave. And I lost Kona, Kona was there. Kona, can you hear me there? Oh, there she is, okay.
I can.
Good morning.
We have no testifiers in Kona.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, you're on a different screen. Okay. Okay, so why don't we start with our first testifier in Waimea and then move over to Kilauea. Waimea, please go.
Good morning, yes, our first testifier, and only testifier, is Britt Bailey, representing herself. Here to make comment on Communication 845.
Good morning Council members. My name is Britt Bailey, I'm a resident of Waimea. I have a Masters in Environmental Policy and Planning, as well as a J.D. from the University of Hawaii Richardson School of Law, with a specialization in land use and environmental law. I've experienced as a planning commissioner in a California county, and I'm currently a board member of the Waimea Community Association. The Lower Hamakua Ditch is a vital, cultural, historical, and environmental feature of Hamakua and Hawaii County. Like its counterpart in Kohala, the Lower Hamakua Ditch is an engineering masterpiece. It's an embodiment of our past and represents the fabric of our future. In 1999, the State of Hawaii, after much public discussion with the community, finalized an environmental impact statement wherein the Lower Hamakua Ditch would be repaired and maintained through a multi-year phased plan that would preserve the ditch as an open water feature. In 2006, the state abruptly went off plan and decided to place plastic piping into the ditch, which would then be buried. In essence, the state decided to cover and otherwise eliminate the ditch and its ecosystem. I've walked the ditch, I've studied its history, and the state's plan to bury this ditch would simply be a travesty. Council members, as someone with a planning and environmental background, as well as a person who deeply appreciates the culture and history of Hawaii County, I'd like to make two requests to you. That you insist that the state involve you and your constituents in its plans for the Lower Hamakua Ditch, so that decisions pertaining to its future occur with openness, transparency, and deep consideration. Secondly, that you insist that the state perform a supplemental environmental impact statement. The current environmental impact statement's 13 years old and did not fully assess the state's most recent decision to fill the ditch. The Supreme Court of Hawaii has recently determined that where an action changes substantively from the original project, that there be a supplemental environmental impact statement. This process is consistent with the Hawaii Environmental Protection Act, Chapter 343, and it's subjective that there be cooperation, coordination, as well as public participation that benefits the environment. Filling the ditch is a different action that was not considered fully in the 1999 environmental impact statement. For the sake of our history, culture, and the environment, I urge you to request the supplemental environmental impact statement and command a transparent and thorough discussion of the ditch's future before we lose this treasure. Mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. Our first testifier here in Kilauea is Mr. Dwight Vicente. Dwight Vicente, are you here? I saw you. Mr. Vicente, I see you outside. You're up.
One again, when it was Dwight Vicente, I'm representing the Hawaiian Kingdom. The Hamakua Ditch has not been transferred. It was leased for 25-year terms. It's still the property of the Hawaiian Kingdom and will remain so. So, any activity dealing with the Hamakua Ditch is condemned. So I'm preserving the rights of this kingdom under Queens Protest of January 17, 1893, against U.S. Minister Stevens. He had to make his way to the U.S. Supreme Court, Article 3, Section 2, Clause 2. Original but limited jurisdiction over U.S. Minister Stevens only. And the other one is the Northwest Ordinance of 1787 was illegally applied to this kingdom in 1887 for the Benet Constitution and the reciprocity treaty, placing this kingdom under the false pretense of the Northwest Ordinance, which has no jurisdiction over this kingdom. And the venue is Washington DC, U.S. District Court. So we're preserving all the rights of this kingdom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vicente. That takes care of our testifier of this committee meeting. I want to introduce the members of the council. Mr. Ikadas from my far right, followed by Ms. Ford, Mr. Blas, Mr. Palako, Mr. Yagon, Mr. Hoffman is excused, and Ms. Smart next to me. I'm Chair of this committee. Okay, we're going to begin by taking the first Communication 845 presentation by Third Thursday Friday regarding the Lower Hamakua Ditch from Council Chairperson Dominic Yagon dated September 14, on the call requesting time for presentation by Third Thursday Friday regarding the importance of the Lower Hamakua Ditch for residents of Hawaii. Mr. Yagon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Move to accept the presentation and propose follow-up for the Communication 845.
Okay, please proceed, Mr. Yagon.
Thank you very much. I just like to have the people go forward and begin the presentation. I do believe it's not a very long presentation, so, very good. So as you come forward now, just please introduce yourself and then proceed with your presentation.
Good morning, Chair presents. Chair Yosimoro, my name is Eeny Bickley. I live in Kalana, halfway between Waipio Valley and Haunaka'au. The ditch crosses my property. I own a gift shop and have a small farm. We are here today to share our concerns about the Lower Hamakua Ditch watershed. The State of Hawaii Department of Agriculture is planning to install polyethylene pipes into the ditch and cover it over. For 102 years, the watershed has developed its own ecosystem and cultural influence. There are many areas of hand-cut stones that would be lost forever. With the potential to deliver 40 million gallons of water a day, agricultural, tourism, and energy possibilities are almost endless. The Hamakua Ditch runs 26 miles through areas of deep rich soil and great climate. It is vitally important to the future sustainability of our island. It has been maintained as an open water vessel for 102 years with very few problems. There are systems that are in disrepair that keep the ditch running smoothly, such as the ditch above the ditch, the sand traps, and the overpasses to prevent flooding. Instead of spraying noxious pesticides, ground covers could be planted to hold the banks and prevent erosion and landslides. A friend of mine who worked on the Hamakua Ditch and whose father also worked on the ditch feels it's best to leave it open. This reminds me of what Hamakua means, the breath of our elders. And when we are elders and if we were unable to keep the ditch a beautiful sunlit open stream, our children will ask, "How could you have let this happen?" Lastly, I just want to share with you the joy and relaxation of spending time by the ditch. Sometimes I surprise the Koloa ducks or gray herons. There are always creatures in the water, crayfish, swordtails, tilapia prawns, oouhou, and blue dragonflies dipping their tails. I treasure the sound of gurgling splashing water. It would be so sad and heartbreaking to lose this.
Mitch Evans, could you take a quick photo of that?
Hello, Mr. Aloha. I am Mitch Evans. I'm a president for the last seven years in Hamakua. Have been involved in community activities concerning sustainability and the local Ina for the last seven years. I would point to you this following point. The air, the water, and the Ina of the land are a jointly owned common. They are common to all residents of Hawaii Island. All residents of Hawaii Island have a constitutional right to those commons. In the Hamakua Ditch, the water and the Ina of the land are representatives. It's very important that the community as a whole share in the understanding and the joint decision-making on what is best for the community as a whole in regards to the Hamakua Ditch. It's that simple. We cannot, and it is not in the best interests of the county, for decisions to be made under the table behind closed doors. We cannot serve only a limited number of interests here. We must serve the longtime, multiple-generation families that live in Hamakua. We must serve farmers. We must serve the native Hawaiian population. And we must serve the new residents in the last decade. All of us need to breathe, and we need to drink, and we need to walk the land. We need to come here so that we can benefit from the Ina, and we come here to learn how to give to the Ina. In order for all of that to happen, there's a need to, we want to be process proper and transparent. If you'll recall the Hamakua Agricultural Plan that was published in 2006, statements were made that were reflective of the sense of the community. What does the community want? A lot of effort and energy went into finding out what is it that we all want to do and how can we all benefit from the ag plan and the progress we're going to make towards our future. Therein, it's a testimony of what the people felt is best for them. There is a purpose for the ongoing community development program, also to represent the diverse entities across the island and in Hamakua. The process that the state is engaging in ignores those clear statements of the intent and will of the people. I urge you to join with us in supporting a slowdown and a deliberate and public process for determining the future of the ditch. Thank you.
Aloha Chairman Yosimoro and Council members. My name is Chelsea Yagon, and I'm a proud resident of Haunaka'au. I'm a fourth-generation Japanese and a third-generation Filipino. And although I did not grow up during the plantation days, my family's plantation roots run deep. The Lower Hamakua Ditch is a part of my culture, a part of my past, and needs to be a part of our future. Construction of the Lower Hamakua Ditch commenced in May of 1909 and was completed in July of 1910. It includes a series of 45 tunnels, some of which were considered the longest single burings of irrigation projects in the world. The longest tunnel was 3,312 feet. The Lower Hamakua Ditch provides incredible historical connection to the plantation life that once was. In fact, the Lower Hamakua Ditch is an eligible state historic site under several criteria, A, C, and D. A being associated with events that have made significant contribution to our American or Hawaiian history. C embody the distinctive characteristics of a type of period or method of construction. And D have yielded or may be likely to yield information important in prehistory and history. And I am very pleased to announce that we have contacted the Department of Land and Natural Resources Historical Preservation Office with the hopes of making the Lower Hamakua Ditch an official state historic site. Because as stated in a memorandum by a former Assistant Hawaii Island Archaeologist, the Lower Hamakua Ditch is quote, "Uniquely peaceful, accessible, and a well-preserved piece of history," end quote. Both the county and state understand the importance of preserving and protecting historical cultural assets. This is clearly stated in both the county general plan as well as the State of Hawaii general plan. And the State of Hawaii general plan specifically points out that we need to co-protect those special areas, structures, and elements that are integral and functional part of Hawaii's ethnic and cultural heritage. And we also need to promote, quote, "Greater public awareness and appreciation of Hawaii's environmental resources." The Lower Hamakua Ditch is a quintessential example of environmental and historical assets that we need to protect. The Lower Hamakua Ditch is home to the rare blue dragonfly, the blue-crested heron, tilapia, crayfish, guppies, rimo, and ducks that only call Maui and Hamakua home. This is a very exceptional ecosystem. At this time, I would like to introduce Fernando. He is a part of the Hamakua Northheal Agricultural Co-op, and he lives right in Waipio Valley. Mahalo.
Aloha, I'm Chair Yosimoro.
Please speak closely, bring the microphone closer to you, Dave Yagon.
Thank you. As we already know, the Hamakua Ditch is one of the most interesting issues for farmers like myself. I've been farming for the past 30 years in the Hamakua, Waipio Valley, in Hamakua. And one of the biggest concerns was that a lot of us didn't know that they were putting pipes. And also, a lot of us didn't know that the water volume was reduced. Having pipes that would reduce the volume of water. And the intensity of having this pipe in the ditch is that it will reduce water. Why would it happen? Why would it happen if we have a huge storm, you know? By appreciating the advantages of having the ditch open, you know? As well than closing them out, you know? The advantage and disadvantage. Drawbacks and the debris. How this, what the people, the state people, is planning to, what? What is their plan to do with the debris, with the sand, with the sand, you know? We, a group of farmers, we went to seasonal decides on the overpasses, like the silicon, the sand overpasses. We were amazed of the structural system that plantation once had. We were amazed on how there were five passes, there were places where in case of big storms, how they deal with the water from the storm to keep the ditch flowing. It was efficient system. And now, taking it away, you know, it's like, not well for the community. And also, kind of disappointed that a lot of us farmers didn't know. Just drove by and we see people putting pipes, you know? I would assume that the community should be partaking of this issue. Should be part of this, you know? And with this, I thank you very much.
Give you one more presentation. Presenting, correct?
Margaret Willie, from Waimea. I've been assisting the community in Hamakua on their effort to preserve the open waterway watershed. And let me just say, my background is, I'm an attorney, but I also have a background in cultural anthropology. And so I'm pretty much putting on my cultural anthropology hat right now at the importance of preserving our heritage. And in terms of the big picture, I'm really trying to encourage you, as the county, to step up and take a more active role in the preservation of historic culture and in preservation of watershed ecosystems. My sense is, I mean generally, that this has been left to the state as it has a preservation office and in terms of water issues. But it really, the state is not doing a good job, so these things do not get done. And I also want to stress the importance of history and heritage in terms of our economic future. All of these issues play together. One reason that we've come here is that there is no Hamakua CDP plan in place. So that really leaves you, the most local government body, for this discussion. The general plan, what Ms. Yagon stated, referred to, provides protect, restore, and enhance sites, buildings, objects of significant historical and cultural importance to Hawaii. In terms of the draft Hamakua CDP, it states, "Appreciate the cultural assets that undergrid the sense of place for the region." If you look at all the CDPs that I'm pretty much aware of, they all stress sense of place as something, an overarching principle. I think there's also the process issue. Here, the process sort of went awry. There was a general environmental impact statement, a memorandum agreement, huge community input, that then was proceeded on, and suddenly, a lot of the landowners got a notice that there was about to be construction on their land and repairs, which really meant inserting this pipe. I did give you some pictures in black and white, just to give you a sense of what it looks like and some of the incredible floes that were in place. I think a lot of this is sort of convenience. Wouldn't it be easy to just put pipes over it, cover it up, and we don't have to worry about it? We don't have to think about it idea? And yet, really, the planning for inserting the pipes, they ordered the wrong kind of pipes. As I understand, they're sewer pipes. They're not high-pressure pipes. And I'm not sure whether it's the federal government, but for one reason or another, the plan is not to include piping next to the tunnels, which is exactly where the highest risk of problems falling in, caving in, or say, an animal falling in. I think what we're really asking is to just, have you all taken interest that let's think of this in terms of what we're really doing, that once you bury it, it's forever. It's done, it will never happen, it'll be gone. And ask you, whether it's to wait for the CDP, Hamakua CDP, allow for, whether it's a supplemental EIS, to just not do something in haste that will destroy a region's heritage. So I do want to mention one other. We have all these plans, all these plans that stress, like, physical features of the natural built environment should be maintained and designed in ways that foster relationships, connect with history and land, and create a lasting sense of place. All these different things, we need to apply them. That's what this is all about. And last thing, I just want to comment is that the state, which you probably know is on probation from the federal government, in danger of risking all federal funds for inadequately protecting and preserving our heritage. The emphasis, according to them, was to encourage community and neighboring island projects. It hasn't happened. This was a, we were put on probation until 10. And this spring, the state was told, "You are still failing, you're only state in the Union, and you either get your act together or you're losing all your money." So, the Hamakua Ditch, as I see it, sort of epitomizes what's going on. And we just ask for your consideration and interest in this, resolving what happens to the ditch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And this time I won't yield, so all the council members will not be answering questions, and I'll ask to close the discussion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Yagon, and Mr. Palako.
Thank you very much for the presentation this morning. I feel shortchanged that you were given only half an hour.
Where's your mic?
I feel shortchanged that you were given only half an hour. I'm hoping that this is a breakthrough, some further work and partnership between us. Certainly, though I appreciate this presentation, I appreciate this presentation, that something wrong with this meeting. We do need to make at least a resolution. We do need to have something process that come out of this discussion. And let me preface that, this is a case that... Thank you. Dave, you have a lawyer over in Waimea, and you have one here. In my mind, let me go through some of the cases. For example, in 1973, in that Brian Robinson Supreme Court case, Water Rights, Discuss White Barrion Rights, Activities That Were Alongside a Water. This is Supreme Court case in a way. So your lawyers, both Margaret and the one in Waimea, knows about that. And very, there are a couple of my cases that were taught case law there too. One of those cases was Kahangi, just gathering an act such like. That was in 95. What was interesting about that is this, EIS is caught in the clean. I understand your EIS is 1999, and MOA or MOU came by in 2006. So it's caught in the clean. It's also caught with the Waoli Waikani Supreme Court case, Water Rights case also. So we need to jack up the issue, yeah?
Yeah.
And do those kinds of things that call on that. And one of the things, the other rights case that I was a party to, a part of, is the Kamakua versus Grand, this is on this island. In the needing of decision-making through an agency, for example, the State of Hawaii, and allowing them to make decisions for us, telling us how we are impacted for effect. We challenge that, and that's also a case law. Why I'm bringing these kinds of things up is because I'm sure that some of us in the community are anxious to join in something that will appear to be a good win, good in terms of community benefit. So we're pleased with that effort, but we need to move it forward out of today's discussion, out of this presentation, into some form, even though non-binding, some form of legislature, or this conference, to commit this conference to your efforts. So I wanted to bring those things up, that there is precedent that has been set on Supreme Court level, and that history is consistent, the genealogy is all of that. This is, this is a good win, insofar as some of our previous efforts. And certainly, we need to adhere and not allow others to dictate to us how we see our practices, customary traditional practices. What I am saying is, we are all practitioners, both cultural and environmental. Also, we should never get sidetracked nor driven by an environmental impact statement. Because in 2000, the city of the legislature embedded a cultural impact statement and amended to the environmental impact statement. We want that too. Congratulations on your win.
Thank you. And we're very happy to engage further.
Thank you, Mr. Palako, and Ms. Ford.
Thank you. I apologize for my level of ignorance on the ditch. Ignorance is always correctable. Information takes care of the problem, so I'm going to ask for information. First of all, who? Is it the state? Is it the state or the feds who are putting pipes in our ditch?
Department of Agriculture is heading up the effort.
State?
The state, but it's a multi-level group. There was a two thousand and one memorandum of agreement that federal, state, and community that agreed that it should be, remain open. Then there was a second memorandum of agreement in two thousand and six. Not all the same parties signed it. Uh, and in order to change the two thousand and one, there were supposed to be public hearings and the same signatories, that was not done. So I can give you the list of who all the entities are. Uh, so it is multi-level.
All right. If I'm to understand this, the state Department of Agriculture is putting in pipe into our ditch without our permission, our being the community, the county...
Home rule.
Home rule, you know, all of that, as usual, has gone out the window. They're putting pipes in, and then they're burying the pipes. Okay, let me make a few comments here. Please, Margaret, I'm going to ask you or the other gentleman to correct my mistakes if I make them. Okay, so first of all, in the, I got to tell you that, is this water used for potable water or is agri, agony?
Agony.
Okay. Because PVC is not allowed by use by our Department of Water Supply for potable water. And the reason it's not used is I've been trained or educated by the UMS, is that it's, it's subject to degradation. Uh, if it was to be visible to sunlight, um, it would degrade. If it's, uh, but the biggest problem when you bury it is that you have rocks or pressure and, we have earth movement on this island, surprisingly. We have earthquakes, and so those rocks started breeding the PVC, and they cause holes in it, and it degrades. Now it's buried, it's got holes in it, we're going to have a leakage anyway. So that's a problem. Plus, you're going to have, once you have leakage, then you've got soil moving downhill. Uh, and, you know, all the problems we have with soil erosion and the devastation it causes down here, hill. Then we've got the state Department of Ag, who is destroying the habitat of three rare species of animal life on this island, in violation of our constitution at the state level, in violation of our charter and our general plan and various CDPs. Then we have an historic site. Um, Ms. Yagong testified this ditch was started in nineteen oh nine and completed in nineteen forty-something. I didn't catch the last date, but it's definitely older than fifty or seventy-five years old. So we have an historic site that is being destroyed by the state Department of Agriculture. Third or fourth, it's a heritage site, because our community all along this ditch has been using this ditch since its completion, certainly in sections before the, you know, end of the nineteen forties. Um, so the question I have, and I agree with everything that Ms. Palago said, and those case laws are vitally important to you, what I don't understand is why hasn't there been someone filing a legal, I don't know if I'm using the right word because I'm not an attorney, a stay of the construction or the laying of this pipe? Why, why not?
Okay. Uh, right, there are really two issues. One is who owns or controls that easement area? And the second is, and controls it in order to preserve and maintain and care for the ditch? The second is how you care for it and what you do. Right now, the state has been negotiating and bringing lawsuits against, um, individual members who, landowners, in order to obtain control of the ditch. Which is, so they have their eminent domain proceedings right now against two of my clients, okay? That lawsuit, though, is not address what will be done, how you care for it. So what I've tried to do is separate those issues that allow the state to have, it now it's down to only my two clients are the only ones that haven't, were negotiating on that. But the other question, which I brings up what really council member Palago said, is even if it is state-controlled, that is a public trust asset. That is something over which not, that the state cannot act as the owner or the fee owner. In fact, there was an August fifteenth case, Maui water case, emphasizing all of these points. It doesn't eliminate the general plan. You don't undermine all of these other laws that you address. So my aim really is, let's not have a ten-year lawsuit. Let's try to have an adult conversation and allow this to be looked at and have the county involve the community involved and look at the issues and try and make an adult decision on this.
Okay. Ms., Ms. Willie, um, I agree that water is a public trust, that's in our state constitution. So, you know, there's another one I didn't mention, and Ms. Palago is absolutely correct. He's been fighting these issues longer than I've ever lived on the island. But what I, what I'm still confused about, let me go back to, is, is who owns the ditch? Now, we know the ditch is an easement, um, across as many property owners' land, but the ditch carries the public trust in it. Contents of the ditch belong to all of us. It's water. Okay? So, um, I don't know who's, the, the state is, I understand they're using eminent domain to try to gain control of the ditch, but I don't understand what the basis of the ownership is. I don't think...
The corridor. They want to take the land underneath twenty feet either side.
Of the ditch.
Of the ditch.
But why are they doing this? And this, the, the state, at the very least, the state owns the ditch.
Right.
And, and I'm not sure about that, but at the very least, they own it. The county may own the ditch, and certainly the landowners who have the easement across it, they don't own it because there's an easement, but it's got to be some agency that already owns the ditch.
Or the trustees in the bankruptcy action that was never completed, in terms of the irrigation of Hamakua.
Okay.
And the, so it is, but if you, we've sort of looked at this as what other agendas are going on here, like, there's more...
As in stealing water?
As in, right, or more...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Controlling, who has control of the water?
Okay.
Um, but if we just assume, I think, that it's at least that that easement is, whether it's under state, a government entity control, in my mind, whether it was under the county or the state or the feds, there are government procedures, decision-making procedures, that involve transparency and public input that are being totally...
Ignored.
Ignored.
I, I agree with you. But my, but my concern is the state, you know, I think it's nice to say we should have an adult conversation with the state, and I applaud you for that. Um, this council has had many adult conversations with the state, and frankly, um, when it deals with state agencies, legislature we have more luck with, but with the agencies, we have not so much luck in talking to them. And the fact that they're willing to file a public trust, our rare species and its habitat laws, um, take control of the water for whose benefit, I'm not quite sure yet, because everybody along the ditch gets to use the water, correct?
Well, if it's all piped.
No, no, not piped, today.
Today.
Everybody on that ditch gets to use the water.
Including the county, the county has a lot.
So all these landowners and the county are going to be stripped of our rights to the public trust water if they do this piping.
Well, they would disagree. They would say that they would put a meter there and they would negotiate whatever terms to what they have to do.
Okay, but they all, but the minute they pipe it, they have destroyed the habitat of rare and endangered species, which just annoys me. They basically destroyed our historic site. Yes, it's going to need maintenance. We, we all have to maintain this ditch and keep it open and working. But I, you know, I think it'd be nice to say, um, the council should pass a resolution. I will absolutely support a resolution, trying to cease and desist, and, you know...
I did submit some draft language, a rough draft, and ideas, if you are ready to do that.
I, I'm more than happy to support anything like that, and I think there's probably a lot of us on the council that would do that. But the problem that I see is they're just going right ahead and doing it.
Well, I think we're sort of holding our finger in the dike. And it's...
In what way?
Your two clients...
With your lawsuit? Your two clients' lawsuit.
Yeah, them coming after us, and we've sort of been holding them at, at bay, and we're looking for help.
Okay.
It's very expensive.
Okay, I, I just, I'm going to yield in here a second, but I don't mind helping. I think we should help as a council by doing this like a resolution, but, um, I think it's going to take more than the finger and the dike, and I think we need some, I don't know if your lawsuit covers all the issues that I named, but those, a lot, those issues need to come up in a lawsuit too. Thank you, and I, I'll yield.
Thank you, Ms. Ford, uh, Ms. Yagong.
Thank you. I guess we should be closer because I know we're half the nomination, and fight for you, so, so. But first of all, I want to thank the Third Thursday Thrive Group, that has been absolutely instrumental in, uh, having this issue being discussed within the community, and I think their goal is so again, to continue to educate the, uh, the community as a whole in regards to this folks. And I'll tell you, man, I, I lived, um, in, grew up in Haina, and, um, and this ditch has been the absolute lifeline of the community, whether it was for the plantation, it was a Hawaii ditch. And folks, you know, I drank that water. That was our potable water. That was the water we drank right out of that ditch, and I'm still alive. And our only filtration system at that time was, if you folks remember the tobacco bag, the burlap bag, remember that? That was a filtration system where they would, yes, you're right, bull Durham bag, and we would tie that onto the faucet. That was our filtration system, but we drank the water, but it's, it's much more than that. It's, it's historic. It's, you know, from the night, early nineteen hundreds, people died building this ditch. And I heard the stories from all the plantation folks, and, and as I mentioned, it is a lifeline. So it's something that we need to make sure any decision that'll be with that is a transparent one and includes the community. So I thank you, group, for making that possible. Um, the Department of Ag has really held up on their actions because of the discussions that have been taken place. I wanted to make sure that we as a council get educated in regards to this, because a resolution will be brought forward, um, and, but I wanted you folks to understand the, the magnitude of the problem and the importance of, of the issue, um, before we bring that forward. So I thank you for that presentation. I think, uh, being that it's on TV, people throughout the island now can help be educated in regards to that, but I, uh, I look forward to your continued effort in the Hamakua community, in letting people know that our historical asset that belongs to the people, you know, there's decisions being made that we don't know about, and we need to, we need to get the community involved, so thank you for that. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you allowing this presentation. Thank you very much. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ms. Yagong. Mahalo. Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Clerk.
On the motion, full silent communication, eight, four, five. Mr. Ballas? Ms. Ford?
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman?
It's you.
Ms. Riketa?
Hi.
Mr. Anishi?
Excuse me.
Ms. Palago?
Hi.
Ms. Smart?
Hi.
Ms. Yagong?
Hi.
Mr. Ishimoto?
Hi.
Mr. Ishimoto, you have seven ayes.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Motion passes. Uh, motion to adjourn, anyone still move?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Richard, thank you.
Our finance committee will start in approximately five minutes, assuming, assuming that we can get our communication ready now. Thank you.